We're gonna call this meeting to order.
Y'all please stand.
Yes, happy to. Y'all join me. Father God, we just come to you now and we just thank you and praise you for all that you are, for the love that you offer each one of us, Lord, and just most importantly, for your son. We just ask a special blessing on each person here today, Lord, just please be with the commission, just guide them and give them your wisdom and help them to do your will. Lord, we just thank you for this great county. We thank you for all that you're doing, for your moisture that you blessed us with, Lord, and we just trust that you're gonna send more induced season. We just thank you for the bountiful harvest that you're preparing. We just ask that you are with each one of us and help us all to remember to reflect you in all that we do and all that we say and all that we are. And we just thank you and praise you for your son. In his precious name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty and public for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and just, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, with the simple, perfect friendships among united cultures.
Thank you. Okay, first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Second, approval of the minutes from March 5th regular meeting.
So move.
Got a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item three, approval of accounts payable and payroll.
I'm gonna approve the accounts payable and payroll.
All second, motions. Yes.
I've got a couple of questions about the payroll account. I believe it's on page three. Ms. Hamilton, under Artesia, fire equipment had a check for $1,196 to Bauer Maintenance. What would that be?
It would be the rural fire departments. Melon Sand and Archer both housed under there. I don't have the check in front of me.
Under Artesia?
Mm-hmm. Yes, they're a vendor.
Okay, and then, uh, on page, I believe it's page five, there was a check to Monster Towing and Recovery for a plow and a spreader for $17,556?
That's for the snow equipment that the commission budgeted for in the road department.
That's to get it here?
That's to purchase it, the snow plow and the salt spreader.
Well, it'd be in a towing and recovery, it just, I thought it might have, something might have broke down and had to go get it. All right, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to public requests. Does anybody have any public requests they would like to?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commission. I'm TJ Cathy. My family resides at, on South Roosevelt Road R. I come to you today as a husband and father of two with a few simple questions, specifically in reference to the unincorporated areas of our county, which is the area between the city limits of Bertalis, village limits of Causey, Dora and Floyd, and the town of Alida. What is your plan to ensure that the unincorporated areas of our county receive fire and EMS services? I'm not blind to the fact that anything I say will be viewed most likely by the commission through the filter of my career. But respectfully, my questions come to you as a law-abiding resident of Roosevelt County that is only concerned with the safety of my family and the services needed to ensure the safety of our community. How can the commission expect the city of Bertalis, villages of Causey, Dora, Floyd, and the town of Alida to justify using its residents' tax dollars to fund fire and EMS response for the areas that are the responsibility of the county commission with little or no reimbursement for services? How long do you plan to place politics and money before the safety of our community? Do you plan to begin providing these services yourself, contracting with a private service, asking the county volunteer departments to respond, or contracting with the existing high-quality fire departments? So I ask the commission, do you plan to ensure that the unincorporated areas of our county receive fire and emergency medical services? Thank you for your time. I will continue praying for you, our community, its first responders. God bless you and our community.
Thank you. Anyone else? Somebody?
I do.
Okay.
I just want to clear the air. If it's rumor or not, is, does the county have an $8 million surplus somewhere?
Actually, this is public comment and we are not, it's, we're not allowed to communicate back with you. We can't do a debate or anything during public comment. You can speak to us. We can reply back to you through email or a phone call. You're welcome to call the county manager or any one of the commissioners at any time other than during the meeting, during public comment.
So your budget is not open?
It is, but it's not under public comment. Public comment is at the discretion of the commission chair for information only. No action can be taken. All public comments will follow the 2024-02 public participation resolution, which we do not comment back to you during public comment.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll just stand here and thank y'all. I'm Alan Carter. I'd like to thank the commission for having at least one of these meetings at night where it's pretty tough sometimes to, to come in the morning. And I know Paul, he wanted, he wanted to listen to me talk, so I thought I'd get him up here. But I do appreciate y'all having at least one of the meetings at night where we can attend and, you know, so we, so we can talk about, you know, our concerns on the, on the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sure? Okay. Moving on. Thank you, guys. Okay, item six, elected officials and department heads. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped five. Patrick Kircher. This is for additional staff at NMSU Extension Office.
Thank y'all for hearing me out. Good evening. The premise behind this, I was approached by more than one concerned citizen that wanted me to bring the idea before the commission of reestablishing some degree of support for our home ec program, a family consumer science program at the Extension Office. Just a little brief history, you know, the, the university got in a budget crunch in 2010, 2011, and the way they handled that was to do away with positions to recapture part of those dollars they were in a jam with. And at that time, we were without a 4-H agent, so we were very likely target to go remove a position, remove that salary and save them the dollars they were trying to recapture. And so since that time, or after that time, when Connie Moyers was still their home economist and Connie and I came before the commission and lobbied to, uh, have the commission reapproach the, the 4-H position, which was the position that was opened up, and take that on as, as a county-funded position. And after some debate and discussion, the county did take that on. And so we, we gained that position back and we rocked along there for five or six years. And then the county got in their financial predicament and, and had to cut that position. And in timing of that, Connie was looking at retirement. And so as she retired, we transitioned that home ec position to a 4-H position because we already had an established 4-H agent. And so we've rocked along since Connie retired in February of 16 with an ag agent, a 4-H agent, which is unique in the state of New Mexico. We are the only county that has that configuration. Most counties, if they're a two-agent county, are ag and home ec, and then they split 4-H duties between the two of them and maybe with the assistance of a program assistant to, to kind of make that work. So all that being said, we've rocked along since 2016, doing our dead-level best to support a program that's still very viable and is still very active. And some of the numbers there, you know, we've still got 75 members of our Extension Association. It's the largest club in the state of New Mexico without a home ec agent. And so we've been able to maintain support for those folks, albeit questionable at sometimes. But we've done our best to continue to support those folks and, and take care of them as best we can. We've got four, over 100 kids in home ec projects in 4-H right now. So it's still a very large part of what we do. There's a lot of interest in those home ec projects. So I think it, it, it just spells and paints the picture that, that just the stuff we do with extension, not to speak of anything outside of that, that you could do with a, a family consumer science agent educationally. There's, you know, diabetic programs, financial literacy programs, senior support programs. I mean, there's all kinds of things that, that could be done with somebody in that position with that knowledge and expertise. So with all that said, like I said, that, that was the, the request brought to me. And so I was coming before you all, just to present the idea that, that the, the interest is still there, albeit, you know, we've been a few years down since we've had one. But the interest is still there, still there. There's a lot of folks that we still service and represent that have interest and desire for support in this area. And it's an area that I think certainly is interesting to, to reevaluate and look at as an opportunity. And I would stand for any questions. The second page on that is a, uh, is a breakdown on, on some funding that my boss put together to evaluate if we were to hire somebody in a three-quarter time position, in a full-time position, different options as to evaluate. So like I say, it, it, and I visited with Ms. Hamilton. This would definitely be something when we come back again, when you guys get to the budgeting phase to, to be able to pitch that to you. But more than anything, we just wanted to come before you with the, with the intent of, of showing desire and interest by the clientele that we represent and serve, that there's still a need and a desire to have somebody with expertise in that field that could assist us in servicing them.
I am a big advocate for 4-H programs for kids, always have been. My kids were involved, I was involved. Parents were involved, my granddad and them was all involved in this program. Uh, when we cut that economist's position, and it wasn't we, it was the state. I hated to see it go because a lot of the homemakers around here, my neighbor, one of them, Lily Bell Tooms, she was big in that, I mean, really big in it. And I hated to see it leave. And I want to fill the commission in and I'll fill you in too. I was hoping, I'm sure you got filled in, I was hoping you got filled in too. I visited with Leanne Modus yesterday and today about some of this. And I requested, I asked if there's any way that the state, New Mexico State might be able to help us fund this. And she said, Leanne, she said, "Well, I don't know." And I said, "Well, Leanne," I said, "we'll never know unless we ask." And I said, "Do you think there's a way that we can get a meeting set up with them down there?" And maybe the chair and vice chair, and if I could get our, our manager to go with us or have them come up here, we might have a visit with them and see if we can't open up a door again with the Mexico State to help fund this. And guess what? It's positive. It was a positive deal and Leanne says, she talked to-
John Born, who's our, our Extension Director.
She talked to him and he's open. He's open and he sounded positive about it and he's open to meeting with us if we want to pursue this. And I think if we get an opportu, that since the door of opportunity is opened again, I would like to see if we can't, you know, maybe set up a meeting with them guys and see if we can't get this door opened back up for this position. And instead of the county, you know, trying to pay all of a three-quarter or a position, if we can get a full posi, a full-time, you know, FTE in here and, and split it.
Sure.
Even split it, I'd love to see if we can't get that done. And, and I know we're getting closer to budget times and we can find out. And, and I'd like to see if we can't get that done because I know a lot more. It ain't just us, it's the whole community and the communities, surrounding communities of Roosevelt, in, in all of Roosevelt County. And plus some McCurry, and, you know, they would come down and, you know, it would thrive from this. And especially the, the older generation, you know, not, not from my generation and up, is what I'm saying. Plus the little kids coming up that's got their sewing projects and stuff like that that would thrive from this. And like my, like my daughter did under Connie Moyer. And they did a lot of unspoken stuff that nobody knows about through, you know, and anyway, I'd like to see it, see if we can't get it come back. And if y'all are open to the meeting, we can see if we can't get that done. And, but anyway, and, but I was glad to see her talk about the-
No, yeah, she, she called me and, and said that, that it was very positive, so.
You know, so that, I got excited when she said that.
Sure.
That he, and he's even willing to come up here, you know, and talk to us about it. So that's, if we show interest, I think they will too. And I think we might get, work something out and get them back involved in this, you know.
Certainly.
So, but anyway, that's my thoughts.
He really answered my question, but I would just comment that I'm a past Roosevelt County 4-H member too. And that with the world situation and the need to inspire and direct youth, I'm certainly in favor of further investigation as I'm very confident my fellow commissioners are, would be too. So I appreciate the work that Commissioner Chriswell's already done on it, but I'm-
Yes, sir.
I'm in support at this time too.
Thank you guys for your time and listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item six, elected officials and department heads. Look, Ms. Park.
Thank you, Commissioners. We had candidate filing day on Tuesday, last Tuesday. It was a good, not too hectic, not too crazy, well-organized filing day. Mr. Boone came in, registered for his campaign for Senate. Mr. Munoz for District One. Mr. Hamilton for District Two. Is there anybody else here who's running for office? Vicki in the treasurer's office is unopposed. I am unopposed. Now Jake Lopez is in one and the others are Malin Parker, August Cooper, and Jared Burress for District Two. I don't think I have any other information to share today. Any questions? Oh, we do have candidate filing day for write-ins was today. Nobody came in to write in, so good to go.
Okay. Thank you, Mandy.
You're welcome.
Okay, treasurer's report, Ms. Sanchez.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. We will first go over your December general fund balances. Your general fund beginning cash for December was $2,956,963.78. You had debits of $3,264,181.90 and you had credits of $756,786.61, leaving your ending cash for December at $5,464,359.07. And we'll just, do you have any questions of December balances? Okay, well, we'll just roll right into January then. With that beginning cash, then you had your debits of $707,958.30 and you had credits of $1,546,418.84, leaving general fund ending cash at $4,625,898.53. Does anyone have questions of me? Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Lou.
Manager, Ms. Hamilton.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. So just a couple of things to report on. Our budget process is ongoing. We are meeting with all of our department heads and elected officials. We still have our final peer support class. It is slated for March 25th through 28th, that's next week. And we still have slots available for all those first responders that haven't signed up yet. We do have the New Mexico Legislative Update Meeting coming, and I know I've sent y'all that email a couple of times. I just need to get confirmation of who plans to attend so that I can get those RSVPs in. They'll take, I, I have yours, but I haven't heard from anyone else. So does anyone else plan to attend? That Thursday, March 28th is the one in Roswell, which is typical for a lot to attend. But is there anyone else that plans to?
Can I ride with you? I'm not going because I've got class. I've got an ed class. You can go to San.
I'm going. If someone wanted to ride.
Are you going to Roswell?
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll have you.
Perfect. Okay, Commissioner Dixon, got it.
You're going too?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then I will let Commissioner Dixon share about the Commissioners Retreat again, and then we just need to get ideas who needs stuff, so.
Oh, yeah.
That's all that's on my list, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Commissioners. Anybody have anything?
I just wanted to welcome all the candidates here, these hopeful candidates. Wish you all the best. This is a tough road, but go for it.
Mrs. Hamilton, I have something that's kind of nitpicking, very trivial.
Good.
Just a question. We were having a district contest at the fairgrounds this morning and when I, I got out there early before anybody showed up and the gates were open and I, I noticed that there was quite a bit of horsemen there scattered throughout. And I didn't know what, what the policy was when you have an event like that on the cleanup. Because we had, evidently it had some sort of an equestrian event there. And then this morning, the, the FSAT kids were there. There were many busloads of their kids everywhere. And I think these were country kids, and so I don't think that that probably bothered them. But I didn't think it, know how appropriate that was really to, to have an event and then not clean any better than that. So I didn't know what, how, how we handle that after an equestrian event. Does Gary have to go clean them all?
Uh, no, that's supposed to be on the event holder themselves and everything, but I will circle back with Mr. Spinks and see if he had that conversation with the individual that had it written in because there was a rope in there this weekend before the district contest.
Actually, it is very trivial, but it seemed like it was, you know, I think-
It's like beer cans, pick them up. Agree.
Okay, um, go ahead.
I want to thank everybody for coming out this evening. Ms. Hamilton, I was on AC today off of 114. Maintainer was on that road. Did they ever get that Colbert took out? That was south of County Road 25, going to, on the east side of the county road there.
I believe so, but let me check my list.
Because I know the thing, it was a true hazard. I went over there and it, like I say, it was ripped up and the guy that was having to exit to go off of the county road into his property was having to take his own tractor over there and cover it up to keep his pickup from falling in it and, and himself. And I was just wondering, and I did go check and it was sure big enough for a front tire pickup to, to go in and-
Off of 114 and-
Yes, off of 114 going south on AC down there.
According, yes, one mile south of-
Of 25, yeah. Picked up, all right. Thank you. Like, again, I want to thank everybody for coming out. Good luck, Mr. Hamilton, Mr. Munoz, and Mr. Boone. Good luck. Anyway, I hope it stays clean and positive. I really do, I love positive. Anyway, appreciate y'all.
Okay, and I would like to thank all of y'all for showing up. And I want to thank everybody for showing up. This is a great turnout. I'm glad to see people here and I'm glad to see you guys running for a race. It's not always easy and it's, it can be pretty brutal sometimes, but it's well worth it. And I appreciate you guys' willingness to, to better your communities. And so I do want to thank you guys for that. And Commissioners, we are having New Mexico Counties, through New Mexico Counties, we have the New Mexico Commissioners Retreat for our Commissioners affiliate. It will be coming up. It is April the 28th, 29th, and 30th. We'll go up on the 28th and then it'll be all day the 29th, half a day on the 30th. It's going to be at the end of Mountain Gods in Mescolero. And so we need to RSVP and see how many people want to go. We have some great speakers and, anyway, and it's going to be like a networking for everybody to get together and see what the different Commissioners can do to get together and what we want to take forward to New Mexico Counties, what kind of things we would like to, to see done and, and what we need in our counties. And if we all get together then, and show what we need in our counties and bring it together, it helps to, to get it done across the state. So I just kind of need a head count on anybody if you want to go and participate in that or not, so we can, we have a block of rooms up there. And the rooms will be for the 28th and 29th is what the block is for, so.
I'll let you know, I'll check. Tell you tomorrow, I'm sure.
Okay, that'll be fine. Okay, all right. And I think that is everything I had. Okay, moving on. Item seven, new business. Discussion of new economic development incentive program for Roosevelt County, Jody Diaz.
Chair, Commissioners, thank you for having me tonight. Just wanted to come and kind of provide an update informational item. At our recent RCCDC Economic Development Meeting, we proposed a new incentive program for LITA retail. So we currently have a LITA program. This would gear more towards the retail side. I know Ms. Dixon and Ms. Hamilton both sit on that board, so they have already heard a little bit of this presentation, but just for the entire commission and community to hear. So what it would include is a small percentage of GRT that would go back to, or be reimbursed to a new business or existing business that we have if they were expanding. This would not deplete our existing LITA fund. It would be completely, I say not completely, it would be separate. We've seen this adopted. We have seen a couple of other communities that are adopting it or have already been in the process of going through this incentive program and the ones that we- And the ones that we've seen have had success with it from their communities. We will have to set, uh, set, and I do say, Commission, City Council, Community, LITA would all have to set parameters, but we can set it to our community specifically. So we are able through ordinance to set those parameters that, if we decide to adopt this, that we would choose. So it would depend too, we can set different parameters on how much GRT do they have to bring in before they're eligible? How many years they're in business to be eligible, potentially how many employees they bring with their business? Um, those are all things that can be set, um, for parameters. So, um, I will also present this on Thursday to, um, the City Finance Committee and then also to the City Council on Tuesday next week. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, if I can. It is a new program, so I'll do my best.
Thank you, Jody.
Okay, thank you. Well, that's it, thank you. Okay, item B, discussion and consideration of joining with Socorro County and others in signing onto a letter to the Governor regarding the fentanyl crisis, human smuggling, and crime rates in New Mexico. Commissioners. We don't have to read the whole thing, do we?
No ma'am, that's up to you. Uh, this was just shared with all of the managers, and we were asked to take it to our Commission to consider it, so it's on y'all's agenda and it was included in your packet.
Did everyone read that?
A lot of it.
I didn't read all of it.
Do you want me to read it out loud?
If you would like to, because I have to find it on, oh, I found it finally. But you can go ahead and read it, that'd be great.
So it's regarding urgent appeal for declaration of state of emergency regarding fentanyl crisis, human smuggling, and crime rates in New Mexico. Dear Governor Lujan Grisham, as governmental represent, representatives of Roosevelt County in New Mexico, we are respectfully writing this joint, uh, correspondence to request that you utilize your executive authority to address the fentanyl crisis, human smuggling, and crime crisis within our state. The gravity of these issues demands immediate and decisive action to safeguard the well-being of our communities. As you know, the proliferation of fentanyl within our state has reached crisis proportions, leading to a surge in opioid-related deaths and overdoses. The Center for Disease Control and Prevention states that approximately seventy-five percent of drug overdose deaths in 2021 involved at least one opioid. Sixty-six percent of deaths involve synthetic opioids, illicitly manufactured fentanyls. This lethal synthetic opioid poses, uh, poses an immediate threat to public health, necessitating urgent intervention. According to the CDC, New Mexico has an astounding high drug overdose rate of fifty-one point six deaths per one hundred thousand, which far outpaces the firearm injury rate of twenty-seven point eight and the homicide rate of fifteen point three. New Mexico has become a hotspot for human smuggling, with criminal organizations taking advantage of our border proximity. The porous border has allowed a significant influx of migrants, often falling victim to exploitive practices of smuggling networks. This not only poses risks to the well-being of the individuals involved, but also strains our local law enforcement and resources. According to ICE, while smugglers most often transport adult males, the number of women, children, and family units seeking transport has increased dramatically in recent years. They often find themselves at risk for assault and abuse such as rape, beating, kidnappings, and robbery. Smugglers regularly overcrowd living and sleeping accommodations and withhold food and water. Human smuggling is a humanitarian crisis if not addressed will forever be a stain on the history of this great state.
The interconnected issues of fentanyl trafficking and human smuggling have contributed to unprecedented, unprecedented crime rates across the state. According to the Federal Bureau Investigation, FBI, in two thousand and twenty, Mexico had the second highest crime rates in the United States with seven hundred seventy-eight point two violent crimes per one hundred thousand people. Our high crime rate reflects the urgent need for targeted intervention. We do not believe that this crisis is a political issue. It affects Democrats and Republicans alike and should be addressed by whoever, whoever is in the Governor's office. To illustrate the bipartisan nature of the situation, in August two thousand and five, former U.S. Ambassador to the United Nations and New Mexico Governor Bill Richardson declared a state of emergency along the Mexican border, which region he characterized as having been devastated by the ravages and terror of human smuggling, drug smuggling, kidnapping, murder, destruction of property, and the death of livestock. Apprehensions of illegal immigrants by the U.S. Border Patrol have skyrocketed from the declaration of emergency by the Governor Richardson from one million one hundred eighty-nine seventy-five in two thousand and five to two million two hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and fifty-two in two thousand and twenty-two. This startling increase in illegal border crossings illustrates that a declaration of emergency is needed now more than ever. These interconnected issues have strained our respective limited governmental resources to the breaking point and have damaged and killed our constituents. Considering the severity and in, interconnectivity of the challenges, we earnestly request that you declare a state of emergency in New Mexico. This declaration will empower law enforcement agencies, health professionals, and other stakeholders to collaborate effectively and address these issues comprehensively. Additionally, it will facilitate the allocation of emergency funds to enhance border security, support addiction treatment programs, and strengthen law enforcement efforts to combat criminal activities associated with these crises. We understand the gravity of invoking a state emergency, but the current, current situation demands bold and immediate action. By doing so, we can work together to protect the well-being of our residents and preserve the integrity of our great state. According, accordingly, this, we respectfully make this appeal that you pursuant to your power set forth by Article Five, Section Four of the Constitution of the State of New Mexico designating you as Commander in Chief of the Military Forces of this state, declare an emergency and deploy the Army, National Guard, Air Guard, and State Defense Force to counties struggling to deal with the smuggling, drug, crime is, crime crisis to aid the Border Patrol and local enforcement. We understand that the U.S. Constitution grants the federal government the exclusive jurisdiction to protect and manage, manager the border. Nevertheless, we believe the declaration will allow the state of New Mexico to assist federal agencies if requested and will provide much-needed support and resources to the state and local jurisdictions performing their duties under state law. We appreciate the challenges you face in leading our state, and we trust that you will give careful consideration in this urgent matter. Your decisive action is in declaring a state of emergency will undoubtedly make a significant impact in safeguarding the lives and futures of the people of New Mexico. Sincerely.
And then it has listed, um, all thirty-three counties in New Mexico. Does anybody?
With that, Madam Chair, I move, we approve and join with the latter.
I second the motion.
Got a motion to second, Commissioner Savage?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you.
I would like to make one comment.
Okay.
Upon the, uh, upon the, assuming the responsibilities of the Governor. Governor Grisham did travel to the border, inspect the border, and reported that there's no problem. The border is secure, we don't have a problem. Point that out, so I'm not sure how receptive she would be to this. Seems likely to be said that there's a drastic difference of opinion. I would hope that she would reconsider and do what we're asking.
Thank you. Okay, item C, request for approval of the submission of the FY twenty-five Law Enforcement Protection Fund application for the Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Sanchez.
Good evening, Madam Chair, good evening Commissioners. Um, it's going to be hard to say good morning. Um, so we come to you, um, pretty much every time this year, asking approval for submission of the LEPF funding, um, the Law Enforcement Protection Fund in your packet. You do have the application cer, uh, certification form to be signed, so we are just here to ask for your approval and signature so we can get it submitted tomorrow, so we can receive the fundings for the, uh, equipment and also training.
Madam Chair, I move, we approve, seven C.
I'll second. Got a motion to second, Commissioner Grader?
Yes.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Presentation on Current Dispatch Service, Janelle Combs.
Commissioners, I appreciate you guys asking me to come and speak today. Um, I did provide Tina earlier with a PowerPoint, it's not on the thing or anything. I hope you've had time to look over it. I'm probably not going to go through the entire thing, but, um, if you do have questions about it, please let me know. I'll tell you a little bit about what's going on in there right now. I currently have eight dispatchers in my center. I have one starting, my ninth one will be starting in April. Um, including myself, that makes ten, but I do have one position open for one more. Um, six of my dispatchers are classified as Communication Officers One, and two of them are Two. What separates the Two is to be able to communicate, to be a Communications Officer Two. You have to be TAC certified, which is the NCIC terminal, and you have to be a CTO, which is a Certified Training Officer. I only have two that are at that classification right now. Out of my nine positions, out, out of my ten positions, nine are filled, six, um, are certified tele, telecommunications. Everyone has gone through the New Mexico Telecommunications Academy, um, myself included, with the exception of one that has been there for, I believe, three months. She's going in May. And then my two newest ones, and they'll go after her. I can only afford to send one at a time since we're so small. For the first time ever, we did get a third radio console and dispatch, so we have three fully functional operational terminals in our agency where three dispatchers can work at a time. There are times when there are three, like Wednesdays are my overlap day. We have three people in there all day on every shift. The next page you guys can look at on your own, or you, if, I'll go over it briefly. Our call volume from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, the total in twenty twenty-two was thirty-three thousand three hundred and forty, and then physically year twenty-three, it went up by twenty thousand three hundred and ninety to fifty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty. We do continue to take an influx of calls, nine-one-one calls, admin calls, um, into the center. To date, on tw, in twenty twenty-four, we've had ten thousand five hundred and fifty-two calls into our center. Tina came earlier to visit the center, and I told her it's unfortunate that when we have an influx of nine-one-one calls, they roll over to Curry County, and then Curry Counties roll over to Cannon. We aren't able to count the number that roll over to Curry County when we do have something huge happen here, like a massive fire or a wreck or something like that. So we aren't able to count those, but I wish we could. Um, the next page is just a breakdown of the calls by agency, um, the next few pages actually. And then just what our goals are for long-term. Long-term, I would like to get, uh, more positions so that I could have a full-time Training Officer and a QA Manager. QA is Quality Assurance, and that's someone who it's solely their job to listen to the calls that my dispatchers take and rate them on how they did. Right now, it's just my, me and myself, and one of my senior dispatchers does it. And we rate them mainly on the high priority calls and things like that. But it would be helpful to have someone full-time do that, because we do have to QA eighty calls a month. That's pretty much my PowerPoint, you guys have any questions?
Why is the reason that they roll over the calls to Curry County? Is it just because y'all are busy and they roll over?
Right, so if we get an influx of calls, all of our nine-one-one lines are busy, then it has, it rolls over so that it doesn't just hang up on them, so it goes somewhere and to someone. So at the very least, Curry County can take the information and then get it back to us.
I know, uh, it's been, I guess, last week, it was the week before last, I guess, I come by. I was in between meetings with the hospital and the city. And so I went out there and visited with Janelle on the stage about a while. I was out there a good hour, hour and a half. And I've been a big advocate, I ain't gonna lie to nobody, I've been a big advocate of trying to get this deal moved down Lee County. I tell you what, uh, I've got a kind of change of mind. You know, uh, going by there was the best thing I've done, and I was glad I did. And it changed, it's changing my perceptive, perception of that, and like I say, I was, I was happy. I was glad I went out there, I was glad of what I seen. And I'm telling you, you're running a top-notch deal, and, uh, that's what we need. It was needing, it was needing a change, and I, and it's, it's there, and.
I appreciate it.
And I appreciate you, and. But, uh, I was glad of what I seen, and so, like I say, it was, it's changing my mind, and I ain't gonna lie. And I was a big advocate of leaving, a real big advocate, so, but, uh, like I say, I've got a different, a different perspective of it.
Paul, do you have anything?
I think we're probably, this commission pretty well aware of the history. We heard, uh, Sheriff Sanchez speak before about being satisfied with the work and briefly, my main, my main problem with, uh, the agreements we've got into now was, uh, the, I considered it coercion, threats. If you don't pass what we want from Cut Off Services, concerned about putting our deputies in danger. We can't have that, so I was very hesitant to enter into a governmental agreement with, with the city on this because of the possibility of having continued threats to our deputies being in danger. My second concern was, um, the cost. Uh, at the time that we, we, uh, we approved it, the, the agreement that we have now was like a hundred and seventy-five thousand, and according to my calculations, uh, the call, based on percentages of calls for service, it looked like we should be responsible for more like a hundred and twenty-five or something, so it was maybe a fifty thousand dollar difference there. And so I, I went ahead and said, okay, that's okay with me if we can, uh, add that, that fifty thousand provided as an incentive to move towards a regional dispatch. Now, we're not going to go towards a regional dispatch. I, I would need to look at more of the costs and how they're calculated to figure out, okay, what, what can the commission justify expense-wise? Because as, as it stands now, I think we've, we've gone to a, a separate board that, uh, the way that, that they're, they're responsible, that the dispatch manager is responsible to a board. That's what I understand.
Um, that's the way it is in other counties, I'm not responsible to a board. I am employed by the city of Portales.
Stayed with the city. Exactly who with the city?
What, do you mean he was my boss?
Yes.
The city manager is who I answer to.
So I mean, that's still a problem to me, because I've been wanting to go to a board, be governed by an independent board. And the cost. And, uh, I would have to look at the figures to figure out, in my mind, what the justifiable cost would be. And so, as it stands now, I'm leaning towards going back to supporting that dispatch center. I think it offers up, if they're doing the job that we like and the sheriff's comfortable with, that's a good sign. Have to look at the cost. And with our negotiators, that would be, we have negotiators to take care of that, and I think that would be something that I would suggest that they look into and say, what is the, when they give you a number of calls for service, and, uh, what is our portion, our percentage of calls for service? Uh, if we look at those figures and that data, uh, I'd be interested in what you found out.
Madam?
I think.
You mentioned that board, Rod, uh, Commissioner Savage. Ver, and, and the way I understood, I thought Javier, I, I did thought that y'all had, had, had appointed a board, am I wrong?
So the board is an advisory board.
Right, the advisory board, I thought, but I thought y'all had appointed one.
Yeah, it's not a governing board.
Right.
So we, we meet, um, Janelle, myself, Chief Williams, Chief Kathy, um, Chief Smallman, and.
A representative from the County Fire Department.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's not a governing board that she answers to us, but it's just an advisory board. We haven't had any issues with the board so far. We sit down, we hash it out. If there's any issues, we, it goes both ways and we get it resolved. We haven't had any major issues, so just, you know, small things, personal issues, things like that that we work through and then, and move on. Normal stuff that is typical in business.
But that's why I had it understood that it was there in place, that we had negotiated on, so. But, uh, but anyway.
But she's not responsible to the board. She's responsible to the city manager. What I want is to sponsor to the board. Which, you know, that's just what I want. It's not what y'all, whatever y'all likes, don't see me.
I don't guess I've ever thought of it like that. That she was going to answer to the, I didn't, I didn't know.
I would like to say, I think we've moved on to item 7E, by the way, which is continued discussion and direction for FY25 Dispatch Service, just so y'all are caught up.
Thank you, Janelle.
Don't leave, Janelle. So, um, what I was gonna say is, I, we met Commissioner Criswell, Manager Hamilton, Manager Austin. Uh, we met with Councilwoman Veronica Cordova and Councilman Mike Rackler, which is the, I guess, the little board that we have that we've been working back together with. And we've met and we have decided, you know, to go ahead with the full-out negotiations where we're going to sit down and have a roundtable discussion. City-county is what we'd like to do again, but have it more, you know, open where everybody can have a discussion. We also discussed, I believe the four of us agreed that we would like our managers to be in the room in our discussions when we have these because it helps, because they do know the ins and outs and they know the answers and so that, and we all four agreed that we were going to just bring the managers back into the discussion. But I think that we need to, um, if we're gonna do this negotiations, I understand what you're saying, Commissioner Savage, because that's what I understood as well. When we started this whole thing, that it was going to be run by a board. I do think that the way that the dispatch is now, I think is running great. I think it's, you know, done a 180. I'm very happy with the service. I went down there and I, I, you know, talked to the dispatcher. I visited with Janelle. She showed me around, showed me this stuff. I think they're doing, they're doing great things. I am concerned, like you are, about the fact that we got that threat before. We're just gonna cut off dispatch services to you. That is a problem. Because I'll just be blunt, but because we're gonna have to figure out something, because when we get this with the city of Portalis and we've been working on the negotiations back and forth, it's, we're gonna cut you off. We're not gonna do this. We're not gonna do that. You owe us this. You owe us that. You know what? We have the same thing going back that direction. Um, I understand EMS is a huge liability and it's, it costs you guys a lot of money. I understand the same thing, you know, and dispatch, it costs quite a bit. Detention costs us a lot and I mean, like, 10 times that. It costs us a lot of money for us to keep up with all of the dispatch and everything. We can't seem to find a negotiations, uh, an agreement on that and we just keep converting back to these two things, but these are the things that we're needing to take money out of Roosevelt County to send there, but we're gonna have to be getting some of this back to Roosevelt County. You know, whether we do some kind of a wash is something we've discussed. Something that we're gonna do because, I mean, just like we have, I can't remember the exact number. It was in the 800,000s for our dispatch for the one-year.
Detention.
I mean detention, I'm sorry, detention.
Estimated detention.
Yes, estimated detention is like $800,000 is what it costs the county. So with that, we take in, um, detainees from the city police or wherever, we take in detainees. But then it's who's responsible to pay after this date and who's responsible for that. And then you've got the OG's opinion. And so we're gonna read it one way, they're gonna read it another, and it's just been a huge battle over a lot of money. Well, this is money that's, you know, Roosevelt County taxpayer money as well. So all of this is about Roosevelt County and it's about the constituents. It's about the taxpayers. But it's not just one entity. It's not just EMS. It's not just dispatch. It's also detention. And we can't seem to find an agreement with detention and while we're still at with detention, we're still paying the city a water bill for detention. We're still paying the city, you know, for trash at detention. We still have all of those things that we have to keep up with that detention plus anything past arraignment. So we're gonna have to find some kind of even ground all the way across the board because we can't just keep focusing on the things where money's going out. We're gonna have to start focusing on things where the county's gonna get, um, some coming in too, because the detention facility is incredibly important. We do not need all of these people just running, you know, running around. We have to have a place to house them. But at the same time, it has to be a safe place. It has to be a safe place for the detainees, has to be a safe place for the workers. It has to be for everybody. So when we're talking about dispatch, I am all about trying to figure out a way to stay here with Janelle and stay with the, with, um, the dispatch services here in Roosevelt County. But at the same time, we're gonna have to come up with something across the board to work on this. We can't keep focusing on just these, these two things. I mean, it's been, I know I've been doing this for well over a year with just on this board. Well, yeah, three, but I mean, just Commissioner Criswell and I on this, we're not any further today than we were. I mean, we've paid our detention, I mean, our, I'm sorry, we've paid our dispatch. We have, um, we've been current on our dispatch. We've paid dispatch dues, you know, whatever the fees are, the 175,000. We've paid that. Roosevelt County has paid that to the city of Portalis. We're still working on the other things, but I just think we need to find a spot where we're gonna be able to come together as all of this and I know you and I have talked long hours on this. And so, um, do you guys have any idea when you guys want to do?
So when I talked to you last, the 26th would be a great date, yeah. And we can do it, um, at Roosevelt County Electric. Preston Elkins has graciously decided to host us. I would like to add that one, one entity probably needs to be, um, in charge of the dispatch because then your cost is, well, it has to be that way. But if you split it, then your cost is gonna go up from the overhead, the insurance for the employees. It's not gonna be just the the 125, so, you know, take that into consideration. Really looking forward to our, that retreat that is gonna be a county city retreat to see if we can get some of this stuff um, situated because dispatch is being paid. We have a contract for that. We don't have anything in place for anything else. I know that prior when we were in your building, um, with animal control, the detention center and the, um,
Dispatch.
The dispatch, everything that was in that building did not pay for water and, um, and trash for years because that was a JPA that we did have in place. So we have worked together in the past and I'm looking forward to moving forward and getting that done. Um, I know that I talked to, um, Mr. Criswell and Madam Chair, um, with you a couple of weekends ago and we said, you know, one thing that we're gonna have to do is we're gonna have to come in and we're gonna have to pull our chests in. We're not gonna be chest buffed out. This is what we're doing. This is what we're doing. We have to come in and say, what is the best thing that we can do for our community to keep our first responders safe, to keep, um, our citizens safe, to make sure that everybody in our county and our city has access to all of the services that, great services that we provide here in Portalis and Roosevelt County. You know, if we move forward and you guys, you know, there, there's just a lot of things that could happen where, you know, you guys would have to contract for fire and, and EMS. That's gonna be, that's gonna be exceptionally expensive for you guys when we have such a great service that we can work on together here. We just have to, as a group collaboratively, collaboratively say that enough is enough. Here's the contract. Here's what we're gonna do. This is how we're gonna do it and our citizens come first.
And I agree, but we do have to come up with something because we cannot, neither side can pay until we have some kind of an agreement.
And that's why dispatches pay because we have that.
And so we're gonna have to work on something, but I don't know what y'all's plan is with dispatch. If it's something you wanna decide right now or if it's something you wanna work into the negotiations after we do the, the meeting with the city and county, maybe on the 26th, is that right?
Is that, we know it's going to your counties?
28th, that's the 28th, 29th.
Isn't that contract up in July?
It's in July.
Yeah, but if we don't, if we don't start moving now, it's gonna be budget season's over. I know we all work on budget and, you know, all year, all the time, but if we don't move forward, it's gonna be like, well, we didn't budget it this year and then we're gonna, you know, we didn't budget it this year, so we can't move forward. So we just need to get it done before June for the new budget season so that it's ready to go July ones.
But I, I would like to see this wait.
I'd like to see us wait a little bit. And then with that being said about being set for, you know, have the dispatch on y'all's budget and our budget, we need to see if we can get the rest of it done to, you know, get it all, let's get it all done because it, like I say, if we have to shut down the detention center, it's gonna be, if, you know, it's gonna have to, it's gonna cost everybody a lot of money too. And I, I don't wanna see that done. It's a, it's a good facility. They've worked hard to get it like that. And we do not need to see that done whatsoever.
I agree. Your detention center is top-notch. Our fire and EMS service is top-notch. Why are we not gonna use our own resources when we have them right here in our community?
Right. So.
Janelle, did you have anything else you wanted to add, darling?
One little comment. I started making, you know, you know, President Lincoln made a comment when he, as president, concerning steel. He said, if we, if we mine our own iron, make our own steel, we've got our steel, we've got our money too. But if we buy steel from Germany, we've got our steel, they got our money. This is kind of the same deal. If we got dispatch service and we have people, Roosevelt County residents earning salary and working there, we've got our dispatch service. And we got our money too. We keep the money in circulation. That's a point to consider. The same thing would go with detention. If we can keep that detention center open and employing people, with the detention center, we got, we got our money too. But if we have to export that service, it's gonna cost. I think that when we start looking at the economics of it, I think that's something to consider. Keep as much of it here as possible.
I agree.
It is.
If I can add one thing, I know I, I talked about it the last meeting, but the only thing is, don't want us to forget is a long-term contract for dispatch where, you know, we can avoid any of those threats of, hey, you're gonna be cut off at this date, this time. So just wanted to throw that back out there because it wasn't mentioned tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
Soon, soon, it's tough. Mrs. is coming. Long-term contracts. When we've had previous history with problems, long con, long-term contracts was a red flag with me. If we can do this and we get things going, it continues to be smooth. My, my experience of working the school board is long-term contracts. When you hire a superintendent, a long-term contract, you never give more than one year to start with. They have to prove themselves before you give extended contracts. So as it stands now, yeah, I'm, I'm leaning towards going that direction with long-term contracts. I'm a hard sell on that.
I agree. Okay, moving on. Item 8, Resolutions, Ordinants and Proclamations. Item 8A is Consideration of Resolution 2024-13, Recognizing the Roosevelt County Health Council as the Official Health Council for Roosevelt County for the purpose outlined in the County Health Council's Act. Deborah Gentry. Did I sneak up on you?
I just, I didn't know that I was saying anything. So Madam Chairman, Commissioners, I appreciate you listening to this, um, resolution. Uh, this is one of our deliverables. I did want to say.
You're gonna have to go to the, people can't hear you online.
I did want to say that, um, the governor did sign House Bill 2, which was $3 million that will be divided among 42 health councils in New Mexico, um, tribal and citizen health councils. Um, we have been, well, I started in 13 and got the health council back up and running. It had started in, what do we say, 98, 99, and then all of a sudden the, the state stopped funding them. And so ours kind of went away for a while. And then when I went back with the Department of Health or when I went to work for Department of Health, they had me start it up again. So, um, I gave you guys a fact sheet. It tells you a little bit about what, what we're doing. Um, our priority is addressing chronic conditions. Our main thing is food insecurity, but I was really happy when Patrick brought up about hiring someone because diabetes is a big thing in Portalis and, um, I, I go to a community service center in different places and they had talked about Connie Moyer and how she had that great diabetes cooking classes and all this stuff and they really missed that. Um, I am an educator. I can go in and I can talk to them about diabetes, but I don't have access to cooking or any of that stuff. So I know that is something that's been missed in Portalis. We work a lot with the younger kids in the schools with healthy kids, healthy communities. Um, today we were at Brown Early Childhood and we planted radishes, spinach and lettuce and, um, we had the kindergarten and the pre-K kids out there, the three and four-year-olds. It was amazing to watch them plant and they're so excited about watering and then we'll have a tasting at the end. So what we're trying to do is teach these kids, which Portalis is more city kids than some of our rural areas. They don't always know where, where produce comes from, where things come from. So when we can teach them at an early age about growing their own food and, um, the importance of fresh fruits and vegetables and helping them with BMI. We do BMI and that's one of our big things down here at the bottom. For third grade and kindergarten, we go in and weigh and measure those kids and, um, Portalis is pretty high. Um, we have some, some heavier kids. Um, we're working on it. But, um, I do appreciate you looking over the resolution and approving that if that's something that, that you think would be good. On the back here is our James Elementary Garden and it's been going for about three and a half, four years now, maybe a little bit longer. Patty Kane, who is Mr. Kane's wife, she has really kind of taken up helping at the school. Um, she goes and works in the summer. And then if we have extra produce, we take it to the senior centers. Um, I know at one time First Baptist Church, I think, was cooking meals for, um, different community things. And so we took produce there that we grew in the garden. So we kind of label it school slash community garden. But anyway, we are busy. We're open for any suggestions that you guys might have for us. If you are on Facebook, you could like our Facebook page. It's Roosevelt County Health Council. We would appreciate that. And, um, again, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Y'all have anything? With that, I would make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-13.
I'll second.
Got a motion as second. Commissioner Crider?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Item 8B, Consideration of Resolution 2024-14 FY24 Budget Adjustment for Third Quarter Fiscal Reports. Ms. Hamilton?
Yes. Good evening again, Commissioners. Um, so it was included in your packet. Um, this is a budget adjustment put together by Ms. Rivera. She's currently out of the office and asked to present on her behalf, so happy to do that. Uh, one of the major adjustments, we're needing this for, of course, our, uh, third quarter reports and it reflects the debt service satisfaction, um, and transfers that y'all approved. uh, the debt service satisfaction, um, and transfers that y'all approved to, uh, pay off the arena debt. And all of that is no, notated in here. And then there's the other adjustments, um, for the sheriff's funding and those were the key things that she pointed out to take into account. I would stand for any questions if y'all had anything individual on any of those line items. Otherwise, we would ask for your approval so we can have this for our third quarter report.
I believe we approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash fourteen.
Second.
Got a motion as second? Commissioner Savage?
Yes.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine, executive session. Pursuit to ten dash fifteen dash one, N M S A nineteen seventy-eight, seven attorney-client privileged information pertaining to threatened or pending litigation, specifically Isinia Ramirez and Miguel Mendieta versus Roosevelt County, Plummer versus Roosevelt County, Permian Basin Petroleum Association, E T A L versus D O I Counties, um, the G S D. So with that, I make a motion. We go into executive session?
Second.
Got a motion as second?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank y'all for showing up. Appreciate it. Thank you.